Stand for national anthem.
Ropelaleme ling, ropeleng kushas chab.
Raléboga.
Tawela.
Abushein.
Demacherun.
We are here as the portfolio committee of Home Affairs.
Remo Jualoka portfolio committee at Home Affairs.
Representing parliament to conduct public hearings.
Retilele gatong la parlamenté or re rito di radi public hearing.
On my left is Honorable Mulekwa.
Me kala zogolaka la lengene ke moshon piri Mulekwa.
On my right is veteran Lekota.
Ome kala zogolaku yaké veteran. Lekota.
Veteran Lekota. We are divided into two teams as the portfolio committee of Home Affairs.
Ome re Jualoka di shopa jepedi, Jualoka portfolio committee at Home Affairs.
The other delegation is led by Honorable Pele in KZN.
Ome se shopa se sèwa si etelejepeli ke moshon piri Pele go KZN.
I'm leading here the delegation in Limpopo.
Me nage etelejepeli ba rume lamo Limpopo.
We have started our public hearings yesterday.
Ome di ko panachiri di tómile ma vani.
Wants also to recognize mayor who is here, Mayor Mulapisani of the Greater Zanil municipality.
Ome re shompe ngapé le ratropo o alenwona mo, ratropo.
We also want to recognize all councilors who are here from various municipalities in Limpopo.
Ke shompe ngapé le ba rume loba va leromo, va tawo di mapelon akapanero mo Limpopo.
And former MPS in Limpopo I have recognized.
Le mogo le ma loko amaloba a parlamenté mo Limpopo.
Will continue to recognize those that will be coming to our table for notice.
Ome re tla boaga pere, e moga leba ba onba o elenwore ba tla weba itla, mo tafule yare na ba tja di notices.
As you know that the Constitutional Court has directed parliament.
Karre letse bagore horoya molao teo i la ije parlamenté.
And declared the Electoral Act 73 of 1998 unconstitutional.
Ya boya re Electoral Act ya 1998 ra emo mola om.
That it does not include independent candidates to participate in both the provincial election and national elections.
Karre be sa dumelle ba chobao ba ba ike meching, or re ba cheka rolo mo di khetu, gabache e lenwore kecha, me se se tropa goba cha nagakabupar.
And is directed parliament to correct that anomaly.
Ome ilea la la parlamenté ore ipo shule ba tata viu.
The Minister for Home Affairs then appointed a task team that was led by former Minister Wale Musa.
Ome tuna ya Home Affairs ile ya retase shopa chomo se o se etelejopeli ke Wale Musa.
The intention was to consult it and consult on the modalities or method to respond to a constitutional court judgment.
Nepoholo ebé ele ore ohue chweze la ye o ele ngore se mosé o seka se petwa kagona, ma ba pele ta lo ye o inchidwe roke horoya molao teo.
And that was done sufficiently.
Ome se o se ile sa di roga ma leba.
The report was tabled before cabinet and cabinet is approved, the bill was tabled in parliament on the 10th of January 2022.
Ome wilewa di roa pego ye o ele ngore ilea chwelechua pelega parlamenté, ome, can I get the date?
And amendment bill was then referred to the portfolio committee of Home Affairs.
Ome amendment bill ilea rumelo portfolio committee at Home Affairs.
We then invited the minister to interact with the amendment bill as referred to ourselves the Home Affairs.
Ome re lera hopela tuna gorre a level e mola okonya o, karre o rume chwe gore na Jualoka portfolio committee at Home Affairs?
Our role is there to invite members of the public to make submission or comment on the bill.
Jualere, wa re namushum, ke ome ma maloko asichaba gorre, atle ato di radi tsavo chabo na, odimo gamola okonya o.
We have issued a notice that was closed on the 21st of February for written submission.
Ome re lera ancha man 1st o, ilenwore osanche o busheka February.
We can confirm here that there are many stakeholders, person, individual, that have made that submissions.
Ome reka kontishi shale kono le gorre, onaleba hatate ma ba banchi ba obati shichwe rodi submission chabo na.
On the second and the third, we also had oral submissions that were made by various stakeholders and NGOs.
Ome ka di tuli di tre re lera ba le di submission, nche o di dirwe roka molomo, che o di kishche roke ba hatate ma oba chana di NGO che fapanero.
The purpose of those oral submission was to listen to the submissions given by members of civil society, so that they enhance clarity on how must move forward to enhance this legislation.
Ome nepoholo ebé nego telecha di submission nche o, gorre ritele re kone goba na zela ye o reka katala gobele, ba kensa goba na fa cha molao teo.
Therefore, we are giving this account so that you are able to understand why you are here.
Jualere, re lefa tla luse chwe, e gorle kone okushi shawor gabo se ritelechi emo.
We are here to listen to yourself only a submission to the committee of Home Affairs.
Remo goto telecha di tsalo cha le, na di kakanio cha le, na che e lenwore leto di fa portfolio committee at Home Affairs.
We are going to allow individuals or political parties freely to submit to us.
Jualere, re rito dumela ba tufela, mogo le me kato ya se politiki, gorre ba refé di submission o ba di kakanio chabo na.
We are not going to exclude or disclose anyone to submit.
Karre rito tibe la mo to gorre a refé kakanio ya gawe.
We are with the staff, if you can see here of parliament that assisting us to take notes.
Jualere, re na le ba sankedi, ba o ele ngore ba ritusha goba wa la di notes.
You are going to be allowed to use any language as you can notice that we have a team that is going to assist us to interpret.
Jualere, leka bolela ka leleme le fe roba le fe, karre ele ngore re na le se shopa sa di toloki mo, ba o ele ngore ba chofé tolela, se se welse se wese ole se bolela.
What is going to happen is that we are going to identify, if you see here there are 10 chairs, it's 10, seven, it's 10. It's 10 chairs.
Jualere, re na le di tulo che le so memo che o di kona michwe ro.
We are going to raise hands and we identify you, turn your seat, when you finish, you can allow others to come until all of us are going to make submission.
Jualere, re rito lefa se ba kasa bolela, ke re shupa oto cha oto du la mo esdu luse, ome re lefe di choba bolela, le tabe le shutela ba ba weba o ele ngore lewa na ba chofewa se ba kasa boleba cha leba tlo du la mo di tulonche ba bolela.
Yesterday in Toendo, there were huge capacity of people who turned out in the hall.
Ma vani go toyando, hotwa hotileba tuwa banchi goholo.
And others were outside.
Ome ba ba weba be ba lekonze.
We want to confirm and deal with this narrative that the portfolio committee has excluded people for making public submissions.
Jualere, re nyaka go meka meka na le ma barba re agorre portfolio committee e tibe jeba tu gorre ba cha leba tu bolela.
I'm making this point formally here because the narrative, negative narrative has been ran by Osa.
Jualere, ke nyaka hotwa ke bolela se karre e lenwore ma barba re aho adirelue ke Nosa.
So when the hall is going to be full and there are people outside, the team know how to are going to advise us, are going to release others who have made submission, and the others must come and also participate in this process.
Jualere ba tu ele ba banchi holo itlechi, ba ba chofewa ka monkle, ome ba o ele ngore ba tla ba bolechi ba fe di chi ka mo holo, ra ba loko la ba chwe, gorre ba kone o bulala ba ba inspe si ba ze.
In summary, the bill introduced two options that members of society must interface with, or any other option that we think we can strengthen the bill.
Jualere, gabo se bose mola okanyo o, o re fa zela chepeli che o ele ngore goba meka meka na le zela se petwa ekagona, gorre re kone goba tetola mola okanyo.
The first option is that you must remain with the current system but also include independent candidate to participate.
Jualere, zela ya ma thomo ke gorre reka turela se mo ka mukosile ngagona, upea ra dumela di independent candidate, gorle bo na ba cheka ro.
The other option says that you must go to constituency based elections process.
Ewe re resanche re la teleze la se petwa ye o ele ngore i teki le odimra di constituency.
So as a committee of portfolio Home Affairs, we don't have a decision on any eye of the options.
Jualere, re na Jualoka portfolio committee at Home Affairs, karre na sepe to odimra se o.
We are here to listen, at a particular time when we have completed all the public hearings, the committee is going to sit and deliberate on all the issues, written submissions, oral and public, is then that the committee will consolidate the report and submit to parliament.
Jualere, remo gota go telecha le na, gorle nyaka gorre, gudi reka zela ya mukutama, me re lefe di chi, portfolio committee ito du la fase, ya levela di tsalo cha le na, ekabache e lenwore diwa di lu e goba keche lele di kishchenka molomo, ome ya di ko pa nyaka muka cha o na ome ya di cha ko parlamenté.
We have started our meeting late, at least by five minutes late, and we are going to conclude at half past 12.
Jualere, re tómile mora gana go, re tómileka ushe chokofitile mezo zo e mehlano, se o se rago re re rito fe cha ka five past 12.
You are going to be given five minutes to make your submission.
Mo wele mo we oto fiwa mezo zo e mehlano gorre adire submission ya gawe.
When we request you to stop, you must allow us to exercise that directive.
Jualere, re gola ela gorre o e mi she, re hopela gorre o di rebiar.
But we are not going to suppress anyone from this meeting.
Upea karre rito gatala mo to mokopanui.
I'm now going to commence with identifying hands, 10 that are going to make submissions to the portfolio committee.
Ke tlo thoma ke shupe matogo, ke tlosoka i 10, ba o ele ngore ba tlo di radi submission chabo na mo portfolio committee.
Okay, I'll start, number one.
Ke tla thoma ka oye namo, number one.
Number two.
Number two.
Number three.
Number three.
Number four.
Number four.
Number five at the back, yes.
Number five e mo mora go.
Yes, yes, yes. Number six, I saw, you raise your hands.
Pe me chere tlo na mo mora go, number six.
Okay, yourself chief.
Wa na momre.
Number six. Number seven.
Number seven emo.
Number eight with a cap.
Eh number eight, o perike pisie.
Number nine, yes. Number ten with the red eh, yes, yes.
Oh, number ten, we are now want to read.
So we've taken the first ten.
Tani, te sungulutekanwa ten wo sungula.
What we request that if you want to talk, you can walk outside, you can just exit and make noise outside. We are going to respect the speakers. So that is important to respect the speakers that are going to make submissions to us. You can start.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairperson of the committee.
We have requested that eh eh members of the public must just be quiet. When the speaker is on the floor, let's respect the speaker because this is an important platform for members to listen to the notes. Yeah, so we just want to assure you that we don't want to allow disruption in this meeting. So I repeat, if you want to make noise, there are almost three doors I can see, so just quickly go outside with your person you're making noise. Apologies eh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairperson of the committee, once more. To your members from parliament, memolegua, our veteran Lekota, to home affairs officials, let me say protocol observed to our members in the hall. I am Gerson Petulemola Pisani from the African National Congress, Ward Eight, Sabregin Makshope. Support the minimal approach. As the ANC has always supported a proportional representation system that is best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, class, language. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by one quota of one percent of the population is able to find representation in parliament and speak on behalf of that constituency. We have never supported a fast pass the post constituency system as it is difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation, representation when only one or maybe a handful of people are selected to represent a distinct geographical area. Each geographical area has its own levels of diversity and division. Therefore, the PR system has meant that parties, that even small parties, that get as little as zero comma ninety-five percent and of the vote remain in parliament and have a voice in every legislature. The Friday plus is a good example of a party that has been accommodated peacefully and constructively because of often PR system since our democracy started, but has never reached twenty-two point five percent of the votes. It is hard to imagine them or any other small party winning constituencies when constituencies for parliament would have least hundred thousand voters. The PR system also allows better representation of women, youth and other marginalized groups. As the ANC, we support option one as included on amendment bill. We broadly support it as the best option for implementing constitutional order. We do however have some very serious concern about the practicality of the system that is currently contained in the bill. We urge home affairs committee to consider these challenges carefully as they may cause unintended consequences that can harm our democracy. We wish to avoid further court challenges by either independents or parties that may feel disadvantaged. We also wish to maintain the principle in the constitution that demand from us that our electoral system reflects overall proportional proportionality. I therefore submit, Chairperson. Thank you very much.
You can hand over your submission to the team.
Thank you, Chairperson. Eh members of the committee, the officials that are represented here to come and assist your good self in ensuring that the aspirations of the people are actually addressed in this fora. My name is Matome Calvin Masoga eh from Ward Eight, Sefakomapogomakatu in Pidamkavaregine. I'm a member of the African National Congress in good standing and therefore that which has been said my, the previous speaker is exactly what I stand for. I support option one as included in the amendment bill. We broadly support it as the best option to ensure that we are able to deal with the court order that has been presented to us. As much as we support that, we are as well highlighting some of the challenges that might come as a result of independent which might constitute long ballot papers which in any way may negatively affect the interest of the electorate in continuing with their participation in the sense that once you have more pages that are actually highlighting the names of individuals and parties, it might take long for an individual, for him to get the accurate or the relevant party that he or she wants to elect. And as a result thereof, we are saying that the home affairs committee must deal with some of these challenges related to that, uh challenges of financial implications which might as well cost us a lot of money. The ballot papers, the personnel that will be, will be expected to run the elections, the timelines that will be eh required to do the counting and all those other related matters that are as well expected. As they are, as myself, as an individual, I hereby support the proposal as highlighted in option one like I said earlier on. I thank you, Chairperson.
Whoever, there's a chair there so that it's easier. Yeah, once we are done, just put in the team will collect the. Yeah, lokometile ko kublavola me meveka submission la, la stulonya. Re lefe di che li da bo lela la via submission emo. Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Le tofla parlamentela veta pelevarana mafapeng awafa fapa. As well as the parliamentary table and leaders from different parties.
Nali vitjola kaki Rita Ronyshai mwe tapilo African Freedom Party.
My name is Rita Ronyshai, eh the leader of African.
Freedom Party.
African Freedom Party.
Eh areki woncha ke itlagi sha katika kanyo kubulotla ologa nyoko reki male kato yago amendya molao.
Now, eh let me just clarify it that I actually support the amending of this bill.
Eh ne areki woncha kabu zorin gafa eh mllala mo province in Arnelimpoburnaldi independent ichetani jamasbala meroko chaba matzogo.
Now, eh let me further clarify it that eh here in our province in Libobo, we have ten independent candidates. Work is really in progress.
Eh ne areki itlagi sha ke woncha orlegar kabalijwa napala nintemera kota chaba matzoga mabaga la telago.
Let me eh clarify it for you again that even if we manage to get into parliament, work will certainly be done.
Eh kosarezi chaba se keta metapele se keta metapele se lebelejima biyokoaga.
Because when eh the residents elect a leader, they elect that leader considering how intelligent he is.
Maragimu to alakaragamochatlo ayo biyaka gamabiyo kaga we yago biyaka gamabiyo kama chatlo.
But when a person is a member of a certain political party, that person is not going to do what he wants to do, but he is going to be instructed by the political party to do as the political party wants.
Ke gafokila kawo we woncha kabu zorba tuwa ba inchiba na le kato yo kulu kudiya katacha di independent ofetame kato register la olala IEC.
Hence, I am trying to show that a lot of people would like to have a independent candidates rather than people who are within the ANC.
Oh, eh agisore ANC, correct, Chairperson.
Okay, my apologies.
Eh areki chalepele kilaka we woncha kabu zorin re mushwarena oka pala amendamo kaba kateke je di mo jadi tokeleja stava.
Okay, let me eh further indicate that if the government fails to amend this bill, it will be eh trembling upon some of the rights of the people.
Se sararo sekaritlisa jadi tla marago je di inchijawa rebalepalo ye ana kalajati lari keto.
Now, this eh will actually harm us in a way that we will have a very low turnover of eh voters on the day of elections.
Ke gafokila rometa pro African Freedom Party ke hopela oba musha parlamentamo amendment ektoro pasiche se.
Hence, myself as the leader of the African Freedom Party would like the parliament to amend this bill.
I pause.
I pause.
Thank you, next.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Good morning to the entire portfolio committee. My name is Sonya Obeni from Ward Fifteen Makshope Sabregin in this eh region of Nomen Mashaban. Chairperson, I'm standing to support also the previous speakers who represented the ANC and indicate that the ANC broadly support option one as included in the amendment bill. But Chairperson, we also want to bring to your attention that the portfolio committee must guard against people who may try to cheat in order to get into the ballot paper. If you need to show support, it must be a genuine support. If any unrepresented party or independent candidate or anyone working for them fakes or misrepresent signatures, buys supporters to sign or tries to mislead the IEC, there should be very serious punishment for doing so. So we calling upon the portfolio committee to guard against that. We are also saying as the African National Congress, no money or gifts or promises or rewards of jobs should be used to secure signature for support. A clear process for making objections to signature of support should be included in the act. Hence, we are calling upon you to disqualify whoever is going to cheat, misrepresent or manipulate the system. So I submit.
Good morning. My name is Mutusi Rabtada. I'm from Ward Fourteen in Greater Zanning municipality. Um but I'm also representing the Congress of South African Trade Unions. This then becomes our proposal that cosatu, as cosatu, we believe in the current proposal representation system as it best suits the diverse nature of our population. This system makes sure that every individual is represented in parliament and also in legislatures. The PR system also ensures that even very smaller parties that gets at least a zero point five, zero point two five percentage of the vote as a voice in parliament and also in legislatures. This PR system also allows a better representation of our marginalized group, including women and the youth to participate in our democracy. We do not need to have a very long list on the ballot paper that will confuse the voters as caused by too many independents and parties that could not even reach the required threshold. We therefore support the first option as included on the amendment bill. This is a system that has served the country so well in the previous elections and we as a federation don't see any reason why we should change it just to suit individuals eh representing themselves. So I submit.
Good morning eh Chairperson of the portfolio committee and the portfolio committee as large. My name is Michael. My surname is Mahova. I hail from Mahova Stluft. But I stand here representing Lawrence Pokanuka district of the South African Communist Party as a district executive committee member. Eh my ward is Ward Fourteen, equally so here in Greater Zanning. As the Communist Party of South Africa, we stand to support the ANC in terms of its option one as included on the amendment of the bill. We broadly support it as the best option for implementing the constitutional court order. I therefore submit and also indicated that we follow our leader which is the African National Congress. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. Honorable Chawani, Veteran Lekota and Honorable Maleku. Good morning. My name is Kobalasalam Mahoka from the African National Congress, Ward Twenty-two, Bolokwanis Sabregin and the Pita Mukavaregine. I stand here before you to support all motions submitted in support of the minimalist approach. I want to submit, Chair, that as the ANC, we believe that independence I want to submit, Chair, that as the ANC, we believe that independent candidates should be treated as parties. They should compete on the same terms and conditions with political parties. The Concord has obliged the parliament to make amendments to the Act to allow independents to stand against parties in national and provincial election. It does not force us to change any system that has served us so very well and led to no voters or parties ever contesting that we had free and fair national or provincial elections. We have to make sure the system stays fair, simple, and practical. A crowded and long ballot can make elections logistical nightmare. At the moment, parties pay 60,000 deposit for national and 45,000 for provincial elections. If they win one seat, they get their deposit back. The commission should decide if the same threshold could apply for deposits for independents. One seat is one seat whether for a party or an independent. Get me very clear, Chairperson. When a person is independent, it means this is a single individual. So one seat is one seat. Similar to independents in what? Independent candidates and parties that do not have any seats from previous elections must be able to show that they have at least some support, that they could potentially win a seat. We should have a very low limit of support to allow serious parties and independents to participate without encouraging frivolous parties and people and overcrowding the process. We support that underrepresented parties, independent candidates should be able to show support of at least one third of the votes needed to win a seat in the previous election. This is the only way to keep the ballot paper to a reasonable size. I therefore submit to the committee. Thank you.
We request your submission here. Next.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the opportunity also from the portfolio committee. My name is Tovanya Eugene-Massete. I hail from Ward 6 in Polukwane. And I'm also the regional secretary of the ANC in Kapikun District. Without really having to rehearse what my former colleagues have said is that I'm here to support option one as proposed in the amendment and further to say that our elections or the Electoral Act works as it is now. Save for the fact that we're taken to court, we have to be accommodative. It's not because the Act doesn't work or the system doesn't work as it is of now. In accommodating the outcry, let's support option one, which is minimalist. We never had a crisis in our elections previously where elections were said to be nullified because we heard people said that they were not free and fair. The danger here is that if we have got too many independents, it will make the whole process prolix in terms of the ballot paper being too long. Secondly, there must be minimum safeguards for entry onto the ballot paper such that people must show support to say that it's not just an exercise in futility to be included on the ballot paper and make the whole process prolix. Thirdly, the Act as it stands now, there are certain laws that governs those who participate in the elections. The independents who are going to be participating in this process have also to meet those requirements and also be subjected to the same requirements because it's part of the playing field and the rules that are there on the playing field. And without really having to be long, I submit that we support option one as proposed in the amendment bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairperson, and greetings to the members of the committee, the EFF leadership that are here, and also I saw the Member of Limpopo Legislature that are here. I am Ledzwalo Tliford from Ward 35, Greater Zanin, a member of EFF in good standing. As the EFF, we often view that the amendment of Act 73 of 1998, it's long overdue. We often view that in manner which councils are constituted must apply to both parliament and legislature in terms of independence representation. The issue of payments to contest election is a lot, and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraint. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclines for our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies we so move. Thank you.
Thanks very much, our first ten. We want to plead again that those that have been submitted, they can exit the hall because there are still people outside, they are queuing, so we manage our process. But don't disturb when you leave, please. We also want to acknowledge members of the provincial legislature who are here, Honorable Marule, and Honorable Masewame. And a former member of the provincial legislature, Mehmarutamaite. And veteran Willie Madikotlo. Those that are saving in the provincial legislature from various political parties must give us notice. And those as the members of parliament, national assembly will request them to come and sit this side so that we acknowledge them in this public hearing. I'm recognizing the next ten hands now. Let me recognize Honorable Shisoka, who was with us yesterday in Vembe. Honorable Musala was also with us yesterday in Vembe. And Honorable Paselle. They know their roles. All NPLs and MPs must assist us to take notes to our people, from our people. Number one. Number two. Number three. Yes, none. The second, I think EFF. Yes, you are not. Number three. No, no. Yes, raise the hand. Number four, yes. Number five. Number six. And number seven. Number eight, there, the back, yes. And number nine, the cap, yes. The cap, that one. Yeah, yeah, two caps. The last one with the paper there, number 10. Yeah. We'll take another group when we... Are we okay with the numbers there? No, no, are we okay with the numbers? Okay, so... Yeah, it means you'll be number one because I thought, yeah, you'll be number one in the next round here. So we'll start on the second and then we'll move forward. You can start, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Program Director, and greetings to the portfolio committee. My name is Numelekeledi, the Chairperson of the ANC Women's League in Nomen Mashavan Region. We want to submit that as the ANC Women's League, we support the amendment especially on option one, on the Amendment Act of the Electoral Act. And we also say that if parliament is divided into many small fractions, forming government is going to be a challenging factor. We also think that there is a big danger in using the current formula for seats and a lot of parties come in and less than one seat's worth of votes. Votes required for the quarter for one seat has often been between 40,000 and 60,000 per seat, depending on the legislature and voter turnout. But some small parties have one seat on 10,000 vote in the national assembly due to formula for the largest remainder vote being used to allocate left over seats. Potentially, we can have many small parties and independents occupying key seats that hold balance of power in a legislature or parliament where no party gets over 50%. And this is happening at municipal level and often leads to unstable and temporary conditions. And this could be much worse at national and provincial government, where government could be paralyzed by small parties and independents who represent only tiny fractions of voters, but who can make stable government impossible. Chairperson, we propose a two-stage process with all who meets the full quarter of one for one seats are awarded a seat, whether as parties or independents. Once no one is left, who is entitled to a seat based on meeting the full quarter threshold, the remainder seats should be given to the parties that have been the highest average of votes per seats awarded. An independent can obviously only occupy one seat as their surplus votes will be discarded. Any party that has surplus votes should have been added to their total and divided by their number of seats already won by them. The party with the highest average will be then given a remainder seat. Chairperson, this is the only proportionally can be maintained and we can prevent a situation like we have currently where many seats, where party will have less than 0.25% support still occupy a seat like is indicated in option one. We further said most other countries with PR systems have much higher threshold of 3% of the vote before any seats can be awarded. This is done to maintain stable government and is difficult to negotiate across thousands of fractions and totally acceptable in international practice to require significant support for public representative. We are saying this thing because we don't want confusion and as women, we are going to be disadvantaged in this regard. Thanks very much, Chairperson.
Thanks, Chairperson. Greetings to you and all members of parliament and legislature. My name is Rajayana Ngonyuli from African National Congress, Ward 31, Giani Subregion. I'm standing here to support a minimal approach as presented by the previous speakers, that the ANC supports option one as included on the amendment bill. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson, Comrade Musa Chawani. My name is Puti from Polukwane, Pita Mukawa Region, Ward 45. Yes, I've largely been covered by my colleagues, comrades, who have passed already. As the ANC, we are here to make it very clear that as we amend this legislation, we must not create more problems. Yes, we have been given court order to include the independents, but we must make sure that whatever we agree upon at the end of the day is actually practical. We must not create more problems because the PR system, since it has been used, comrades or colleagues, it is functional. And it represents different races, class, different groups. And therefore, as the ANC, we support option one as contained in the Ministerial Advisory Committee. So this is what we would like to be included because it will make it much better for the amendment to be much more practical. So independent candidates should never ever be treated special. They must not be special. If they want to enter the space, they must be treated like political parties, both in terms of resources and otherwise. So this is what we are actually submitting as the African National Congress. Thank you.
We are requested to identify ourselves with our full names for purpose of recording. Next.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Selina Musatiwara Srobo. I'm from Greater Lethava Municipality or Lethava Subregion. I would like to submit the following. Just a minute. As the EFF, we are of the view that the Amendment Act of Act 73, 1998 is long time overview. We are of the view that the manner which councils are constituted must apply to both parliament and legislatures in terms of independence representations. The issue of payment to contest elections is a lot, and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF... The EFF, the EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclination of our people. Therefore, we do not support the independence and individuals to be considered. Just a minute, excuse me. Therefore, we do not support the independence and individuals be considered into, in a manner that complies to the constitution and be presented to, be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies we so submit.
We request that when you've made your submissions, you can go outside so that you allow others to, to join the, the meeting.
Thank you, Chairperson. Greetings to the leadership from Home Affairs National and Protocol Observed. My name is Mudibankazi Vanidessia. I'm from Sangko, Regional Secretary Mopani, Watetewani, Lethaba Zone. We support the minimalist approach. As Sangko, we hundred percent support the ANC on PR system as it ensures that there is a fair representation of not only political parties in parliament or council, but it also take into consideration those demographics that sometimes tend to be marginalized by society, women, youth, disabled. This is a system that gives almost everyone a voice. Sangko is a community-based organization. So obviously, we will support the point that independents should also compete, but equally so, we want to guard against turning this process into an open season where everyone just wakes up and decides to compete. If we allow it like that, it will take us back to the challenges that Sangko is foreseeing, where we have bloated a ballot paper. So it is for the fear of this reason that we believe independents should compete the same way as other political parties. That's my submission. Thank you.
Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee of Home Affairs, Veteran Lukota, MPLs, Councillors and MPs present here, the leadership of the ruling party, the African National Congress, and all of you, good morning. Gennah Mposama Ramalepe from Watetewani of Greater Zanini Municipality in Mopani District Municipality.
My name is Mpo Ramalepe.
The ANC supports the proportional representation. One. We get to see even smaller Nana parties which gets little percentage to have a voice in legislatures, parliament, etc. The proportional representation system also allows better representation of the then marginalized, the women, youth and other groups. Amending this bill would make it practically not possible and logistically so for the IEC. The ballots would be very long, in the size of the barrel, if I were to give you an example. Passing this bill would also mean that every tycoon who loves politics would wake up any day, go and contest. We therefore support the current system. I thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee, and greetings to the entire committee members and leaders in this hall. My name is Magdelina Lewele from Wat three, Maruling Subregion, Mopani and Nomen Mashavan Region, Member of the REC. Chair, I stand in support of the minimalist approach and I want to support fully what the ANC members before me has raised in this house. I'm in support of the fact that independent, eh, party, eh, independent members should also be treated the same as all other parties in the elections. The Concorde does not force us, Chair, to change the current system. I'm saying we have to make sure that the system stays free, eh, simple and practical since a crowded system with long behalf of a ballot can make elections a nightmare. Chair, I'm saying one seat is one seat. One seat can never be converted into two seats, whether it's for a party or for an independent. In closing, I'm saying we support that the unrepresented parties and independent candidates should be able to show support of at least one-third of the votes needed to win a seat in the previous election. This is the only way to keep the ballot paper to a reasonable size. So I submit. Thanks.
Good morning, Chair, and the entire committee members present here. My name is Mbwenishi Aambahamba. Eh, I'm from Wat nineteen in Greater Zanini Municipality. I am here representing Kosatu as the Secretary of the Local, Mark Shoppe. Eh, as Kosatu, we also rise eh, to support African National Congress eh, in choosing option one eh, in the bill. We wish to maintain, we believe that the option will maintain the principles in the constitution that demand from us that our electoral system reflects overall proportionality. Eh, Chair, we are very concerned that the new system eh, can result in a very long ballot paper that is impractical. And eh, we believe that a multi-page ballot is a big problem for voters, the IEC, as well as parties. A ten-page booklet for a ballot will mean the IEC needs to have much bigger budgets for printing, distribution staff, etc. And we all know the budget constraints. Counting as well could take a long time, plus or minus five to ten, ten times as long as we're used to. And we believe that that will compromise the integrity of the elections. Chair, we believe that it does not force us eh, or the Concorde does not force us to change the system that has served the country well and led to no voters or parties ever contesting that we had free and fair national or provincial elections. We have to make sure that the system stays free, simple and practical. In conclusion, we support that unrepresented parties and independent candidates should be able to show support of at least one-third of the votes needed to win a seat in the previous elections. So we submit. And we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairperson of the Portfolio. Greetings to the committee members and officials that are here and the battalion of my movement. My name is Sichawa, Sizwes Chawamalaji, residing in Greater Zanini Municipality, Andale, Nenyewa, Watetewani. As the EFF, we are of the view that the Amendment Act of seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight is long overdue. We are of the view that the manner that councils is constituted must apply to both parliament legislatures in terms of independent representations. The issue of payment to contest elections is allowed and the committee must look into it as well as no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that the independent and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution and be presented to the ratification to the relevant bodies. I so submit.
Next.
Thanks very much, Chairperson, the members of the Commission, eh, as well as all participants. Eh, I'm Jamison Stambalati, eh, representing the ANC Veterans League here in the region, Nomen Mashavan. And therefore, eh, wanted to present to this Agas meeting to say that as the ANC Veterans League, we do support eh, the ANC eh, in, in, eh, in, eh, as far as option one is concerned. Eh, Honorable Chairperson, the ANC has always supported a proportional representative system as it is best suited to a country as diverse as ours in terms of race, class, language and so forth. We are therefore saying that eh, eh, we also have got some concerns. Concern number one would be, we are very concerned that the new system can result in a very long ballot paper that is impractical. We also wanted to submit that a multi-page ballot, it's a bigger problem for voters, eh, the IEC and parties. It will actually need a much longer time to vote as voters must search for the name of their party or independent among other names. Eh, let me also add to say that especially the elderly will actually have it very difficult to identify a name of a preference in a voluminous ballot paper. We are also saying that eh, a ten-page booklet for a ballot will mean the ANC will need to have much bigger budgets for printing. Currently, I know that even what we have, we are actually operating from a very, very, very eh, eh, scant resource base. Eh, if ever we increase the ballot, it will be worse. And God knows as to where we'll actually get eh, financial resources to deal with that. I would also like to add that eh, a long ballot paper will also culminate in, in, eh, into an increased ballot, eh, spoiled ballot papers as many people will get tired along the way and just eh, eh, mark wherever they feel like marking maybe twice or thrice. I therefore wanted to also say that eh, we have to make sure that the system stays fair, simple and practical. A crowded, long ballot can make elections a logistical nightmare. We already have got very chaotic situation which eh, we have entrusted to the ANC to, to conduct these elections. We were not expected to increase nightmares for the IEC at this point in time because they are already grappling as to how can they improve. Finally, Chair, I would actually like to indicate that eh, no one should be allowed to cheat, to get onto a ballot paper. If you need a show, to show support, it must be genuine support. If any unrepresented party or independent candidate or anyone working for them fakes or mis, eh, misrepresent signatures by supposed to sign or tries to mislead the IEC, there should be a very serious punishment for doing so. I so submit, Honorable Chairperson. Thanks very much.
We started the back there. Number one, yes. And the second. Number three. Number four with the white t-shirt, white shirt. Number five with the people.
Number five, Kwanaparintu people.
Number six. Seven with the phone. And seven with the phone.
Seven, Kwanaparintu phone.
Yeah.
Our phone.
Is there any other one want to contribute because it's seven? I want to take the last three. Number eight.
Number eight, Mama.
Shorter one. Who's the last one? Or after here, what lost? It appeared that one. Okay. Yeah, you can start.
Eh, thank you very much, Chairperson, and greetings to all members of Portfolio and everyone in the house. My name is Elizabeth Matuanyema Tabba. I am from Wat twenty-nine, Greater Lethaba Municipality. Eh, as EFF, we are of the view that the Amendment of Act seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight is long overdue. We are of the view that the manner in which the council are constituted, are constituted must apply to both the parliament and the legislature in terms of the independent representation. The issue of payments of the contestant, of the, of the contest election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one of, no one must discriminate on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that the independent and the individual be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution and be represented for ratification to the relevant bodies. I so submit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm Onika Shingange from Wat thirty-two, GTM, Zanini, from EFF. The issue of payment contest election is a lot of the, is a lot and the committee must look into as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraint. The EFF do not believe in the suppression, suppression of the democratic inclination of our people. Therefore, we do, we do support that independent and individual might be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies. We so submit. Thank you.
Eh, thank you, and greetings to you, Chairperson, and the veteran, the rest of the table. My name is Madimeja Matonzi from Wat forty-two, Polukwane Municipality, Pita Mukawa Region. Eh, Chairperson, I here to adopt or support the minimalist approach. the minimalist approach which is option one as adopted by the ANC because it is accommodative of independent candidate. It is also inclusive of our current PR system. I so submit. Thank you.
Greetings to everyone in the house. My name is Masidolo Luizualdo, the Regional Deputy Secretary of Kosa's and also a member of the ANC at Wad 35, Greater Zanini Municipality. As the ANC, we reject the thing of independence because already people who go for independent elections are people who rejected from a sitting organization. Our people must not be branded by rejecters. And also, independent election cost resources that was supposed to be alleviating poverty and hunger, wasting our time in counting elections. Thank you.
Your submission there. Thank you. Just there by the chair, yeah. Next.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. People in the front line, Honorable Lukota, members of the parliament if present here, and the audience also, people that are coming here to make a submission. I am Jewel Kesha Smukumo from Bapalawo Ram Municipality. I'm also a PR council of One South Africa Movement. I'm from the rural area. I'm here to make a submission to amend the bill. The bill is not equal to the citizens of South Africa. It is in support of the political parties and undermine the independent candidates of South Africa. And we vote equally as citizens of South Africa. The bill is against the Freedom Charter that says people shall govern. In South Africa, not political parties alone. So we want the people to govern South Africa independent candidate given the right to exercise their right, democratically participate patience and equal parliamentary opportunity with political parties in their own country. We want to see the system being corrected when we come to election. We want to see the total electoral reform. We want to see people stand as independent candidates. We want to see parliamentary accountability into our community. We want people's bill. I thank you.
Thank you. You can put your submissions, yeah? Yes. Next.
Thank you Chairman, members of parliament, members of the legislature, officials, members of the community, colleagues. Standing here is Mukua Perama Lawella from the Economic Freedom Fighters Greater Letawa Municipality, Wad 22, Enemupani Region. Chairman, as the EFF, we are of the view that the amendment of Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue now. We are of the opinion that the manner in which councils are constituted must apply to both parliament and legislatures in terms of independence representation. Two, the issue of payment of to contest elections is a lot, Chairperson. And the committee must try to look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. Mister Chairman, poor people, they can see more than those who have money. Three, the EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclination of our people, poor in particular, previously disadvantaged people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution of the Republic of South Africa and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies. I so submit.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Precious Luizualdo from Bapalawo Ram, Mashishimalo, Wad 8. I'm here to represent youth of Osa, One South African Movement, Mashishimalo, Wad 8. I'm in amending the electoral bill. As we are youth, we are totally against the bill that favor the political parties, not the South African citizens. As youth, we want to see SA govern by the people. As they say, people shall govern, not the political party govern. If independent, we have four hundred seats in parliament. Hundred must be proportional. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee, members of the Legislature National Assembly present, and the House at large, greetings to you. I'm standing here as the Regional Secretary of Kosa's in Nomen Masha Van Region and also the BEC member of the ANC in Bonfire Maponya Branch. By the way, my name is Jack Mawasha. I stand here to support option one in the bill as said by the previous speakers representing or saying it in support of the ANC. I'm doing so precisely because political parties provide better platforms for meaningful and meaningful political and social dialogue in society. This is in turn stands a better chance of promoting social, societal cohesion and unity. This is obviously contradistinction with the fragmentation that will result from too many representatives coming from too many persuasions. But lastly, Chair, political parties communicate their manifestos and convert them to a political program in government. They have offices and hierarchical structures and are therefore easier to engage with and put them to account on what they do or failing to do. I therefore crush the opinion of promoting self-individualism. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. The Member of the Parliament, my name is Megdelina Tuke from Bapalawo Ram Municipality, Wad 6. As the EFF, we are of the view the announcement of Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view the manner which constituted must apply to both parliament and the legislature in terms of independent representation. The issue of the payment to contest election is lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of the financial constraint. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of your people. Therefore, we do not support that independent and individual be constituted in a manner that complies to the constitutionally and representative for the ratification to the relevant bodies. And so I submit.
Thank you. Number two. Yes. Come. Number two. Yes. Come. There's only number one and number two. There must not be a confusion. Number two. I'm at number two. I don't know why you just came by. Do you have first? Sit down. We're going to participate, all of us. Just sit down and relax. Just sit down and relax. I'm at number two. Number three.
Number three.
Number four.
Four.
Number five at the back. Number six. Number seven with the blue shirt. Number eight. Number nine. Or looking for number ten. Yeah, it would be the number ten. Are we sorted with the ten? One. Can you get number, the last one? Or workshop? Okay. Yeah, okay, start.
Thanks Chairman and everyone in the house. My name is George Bukis from Gianni, Wad 13.
Sorry, sorry. Colleagues were disrupting there at the back. There's an argument there at the back. Can we dismiss that? Sorry. What is the problem there? Okay, alright. Okay. Can you listen to the speaker on the floor? Can you, I'm waiting for you to keep quiet so I will listen to the speaker on the floor. You can proceed.
Thanks Chairman and everyone in the house. My name is George Bukis from Gianni, Wad 13. As the EFF, we are of the view the amendment Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view that the manner in which the councils are constituted must apply both parliament, legislature in terms of independence and representation. The issue of payments to contest election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in manner that complies to the constitution and be presented for the ratification to the relevant bodies. So we submit.
Thank you.
You're right.
Yeah. Staff, our staff, can you assist us? There's noise here. I'm not sure that it's here or it's outside. Because we have disrupted this gentleman who was talking. Yeah, can you just assist that? Anyone who want to talk. There are three doors. Just get outside and talk and come back and sit. Yeah, our staff, when you see people talking, request them just to exit the hall so that you allow these people to contribute. You can proceed.
Thank you very much, Chairperson of the session, written to the parliamentary. My name is Dido Rapata from the ANC Women's League, Nomen Masha Van Region. I'm here to support the option number one presented by the ANC. I won't go deeper because they have been presented it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Yvonne Matule from Zanini, Wad 8. As the EFF, of the view the amended of Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view that the manner which councils are constituted must apply to both parliament and legislature in terms of independent representations. The issue of payment to contest election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must discriminate on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do not support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies of the constitution and the presented of ratification to the relevant bodies. I submit.
Let's just give Honorable Lukota just a minute.
Dear friends, it's important to understand that if you know what somebody is going to say, but we do not know, if you are making noise, we can't hear what this person is saying and we can't take the notes to go and report what this person said. Now, I have really failed to register the speeches of at least three last speakers because there was so much noise out there. Now, the Chairperson has been asking you, if you feel like saying something, please go out and talk to somebody there that you are talking to. Please, we are appealing to you. Otherwise, we will be wrong when we get to parliament and report and not report some of the things.
Thank you, Honorable Veteran Lukota, for your intervention. You can proceed.
Thank you very much, Chairperson of the session, Datemo Sachavani, and members of parliament, your colleagues, and the members of the legislature. My name is Blankobuloka from Blueback Local Municipality. Yes. And greetings to the Honorable House. Of course, as the ANC has always supported the proportional representation system that is best suited to a country deserving as ours in terms of the race, class, and language. Who are saying that the PR system also allows better representation of women, youth, youth and other marginalized groups. In conclusion, we are saying that as the ANC will support the op, the option one of the Ministerial Advisory Committee as it contain in the amendment bill because it broadly support as, 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 as its best option for the implementation of the constitutional court order. I so submit. Thank you very much.
Your submission there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairperson. My name Rato Paula Johanna from Watetin Five Greater Zanini Municipality. As the EFF, the issue of payment to contest the election is a lot and the committee must look at into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of finance, financialist constriction. We so submit. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you very much. Good morning to colleagues, to the leadership, Chairperson. My name is Papa Smuakamedi. I'm from Polokwane Subregion, Bitabungawar Region, ANC African National Congress. I'm from Watetin Six in Polokwane, PR Council and Polokwane Municipality. I'm standing here as a member of the African National Congress to be in line with what other colleagues from the African National Congress have said. Proportional representative is very much important and is key to the organization. Standing here, I submitting to say that the proportional representation, which is option number one, which was said by my fellow colleagues, is relevant to this sitting. Secondly, I just want to to dispute on the issue of independence because my concern is that where are they going to report? Because they will be independent. Where are they going to account? That's my first option. But collectively as the, the organization, there is a platform where they will be reporting to the relevant structure around the continent. Thank you. I therefore submit.
Thank you Chair. I stand here representing Osa Palaworua Mashishimala, Wat Eight. My name is Malaji Obri. I'm here to speak about the amendment of the Electoral Bill. As Osa member, I support the amendment of the Electoral Bill in favor of independent. The independent candidate must be allowed in participation in electoral election independently, mostly independent most liked by the community. That means the bill is undermining our society. I will be happy if the Electoral Bill will be amended in favor of the independent candidate. I so submit. I thank you.
Thanks Chairperson. My name is Madumira Pata from Bapalawurasa region, representing the ANC Youth League. As the ANC Youth League, we are here to support the option one raised by the African National Congress. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Members of portfolio committees, members of parliament. I is Lyelobet Ramshava, Wat Seven, Greater Zanini Municipality. Makshopa Subregion. I am member in good standing of African National Congress. I stand to support option one as included on the amendment bill. I broadly support it as the best option for implementing the Constitutional Court Order. I so submit.
Thank you Chair. My name is Godri Shay from Palaworua, a member of OSA. We are very much concerned about the, the Bill of Electoral Commission. We are here to make an amendment of the bill due to fact that we are not present equally when it comes to electing individual and independent. We want to govern equally, present equally. We want to inform the Electoral Bill and the system must be changed. I, I submit. Thank you.
Two. Number three. Four. Five. Number seven. Number eight. Number ten. You raise your hands. Yes, go at the back. I'm trying to work on the last row so that we... Yeah, it's, it's it's our understanding that there's no any other hand. There is one there. Where? Yeah, go to the line. Let's just increase the line so that we, we close on the last Can you confirm that outside there's no one, there's no queue? The intention is that we don't want to exclude anyone, so we can confirm that this is the last row. Yeah, now okay, start.
Thank you Chairperson. Greetings to all members of the parliament. I, Maki Maguala, from Greater Zanini Municipality, the Chairperson of the Women's League, Makshopa Subregion. I'm residing at Watetin One Bonfire Maponya Branch. I'm here to support the, the amendment bill for, from the ANC, read as the ANC support option one as included on the amendment bill. We brought support it as the best option of the implementation of, implementation the Constitutional Court Order. I, I think many people in favor of ANC has already alluded, so I submit.
Next.
Thank you, thank you very much Chair. Members of parliament, officials and the community. Speaking here is Mongwe Silens from Greater Giani Municipality, Wat Seven. Our position as the EFF, we are of the view of the amendment of Act 73 of 1998 is long overdue. We are of the view that the manner in which councils are constituted must be applied to both parliament and legislature in terms of independent representation. The issue of payment of contest election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that the independent and individual be considered in a manner that complies to the constitution and be represented for ratification to the relevant bodies. So I submit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greetings all parliamentary members. Me, I am Constance Mrazetla Makoma Mrazetla from Wat Eight under Greater Zanini Municipality. I am here to support the ANC. I am here to support option number one as included on the amendment bill. We broadly support as it is the best option of amending the Constitutional Court. I submit. Thank you.
Let's, uh, thank you as the parliament having come down to the people. Now, what I am going to remind you is that there are promises that you made to the people. And also, you've shown that you work with the traditional leaders as well as their people. Now, we would be grateful if you could talk to the traditional leadership as well as the Indunas so that the people under them can also benefit. Now, my name is David. Nkapele. I'm, uh, under, uh, uh, Hoshi Muhoboya. We claimed the land which is called, uh, what?
Ki, ki, ki tamari, tamari area.
Tamari area, which has different mines. There is a Protea Hotel and other small hotels in that area. There is a mine called Basani which is able to import things from America. Now, we were asking for support for, from those who are in charge of those companies so that the government can also lend a supportive hand in there. Okay, I thank you.
We've noted, I think members of parliament and provincial legislature have noted what you are saying. I just wanted to confirm. But the provincial legislatures are here and councillors.
Now, our committee is not here for what you are saying but we have members of the provincial legislature who will help you.
Thank you to support everything for it.
Next.
Thanks Chairperson of the session and good morning everybody and all protocol observed. I am Mako Madon Sisi Japala from the National, African National Congress, Wat Twenty Seven in Makshopa Subregion. Hereby supports the minimal, minimalist approach. And we further indicate that if parliament is divided into many small fractions forming government is challenging. There is a big danger to using the current formula for seats and a lot of parties come in on less than one seat's worth of votes. Votes required for the quota for one seat has often been between forty thousand and sixty thousands per seat depending on the legislature and voter turnout. But some small parties have won seats on one, ten thousand votes in the national assembly due to the formula for the largest remainder vote being used to allocate leftover seats. Potentially, we have many small parties and independents occupying key seats that hold a balance of power in the legislature or parliament where no party gets over fifty percent. This is happening at municipal level and often leads to unstable and temporary coalitions. This could be much worse at national and provincial government where government could be paralyzed by small parties and independents who represent only tiny fractions of voters but who can make stable governance impossible. We propose a two-stage process where all we meet, all who meet the full quota for one seat are awarded a seat, whether as parties or independents. Once no one is left who is entitled to a seat based on meeting the full quota threshold, the remainder seats should then be given to parties that have the highest average votes per seat won. An independent can obviously only occupy one seat and their surplus votes will be discarded. Any party that has surplus votes should have this added to their total and divided by the number of seats already won by them. The party with the highest average will get the remainder seats. This is the only way proportionally can be maintained and proportionality can be maintained and we can prevent a situation like we have currently where many parties with less than zero point two five percent support still occupy seats. Most other countries with PR systems have a much higher threshold of between three percent to seven percent of the vote before any seats are awarded. This is done to maintain stable government and it is difficult to negotiate across dozens of fractions and totally acceptable in international practice to require significant support for public to require significant support for public representatives. So I submit, thank you.
Good morning Chairperson and the members of Parliament present here today. I am Rupeen William Malaji, Deputy Chairperson of Watre 35 in Makshopesabregin. I am here to present the African National Congress by indicating that Option number one is very important for us and the Parliament should take it as amended by the Act. If we allow individual people to represent themselves into our honorable House, the Parliament, the Parliament will always look like as if it's a big mouse instead of taking proper decisions that will help our country. So I submit Option number one, thank you.
Thank you Chairperson, members of the Parliament and all honorable in this House. I'm Dinzalo Baloi, PR Councillor of EFF from Greater Guian Municipality. As the EFF, we are of the view the Amendment of Act 78 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view that the manner which councils are constituted must apply to both Parliament and legislatures in terms of independence representation. The issue of payments to contest elections is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the Constitution and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies. So I submit, thank you.
Thank you Chairperson and greetings to parliamentarians and all protocol observed. I am Musekwa Carlson Radombo, Kosato Local in Wapalavora, Chairperson. As the Federation, we always believe on the presentation and representation of even smaller groups because that means that everybody in the Parliament is represented. So if people represent themselves in the Parliament, it means that some of the groups will not be represented. Therefore, their voices will not be heard the way it's supposed to be heard. Therefore, as the Federation, we support Option 1 as the African National Congress is also for that option, thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson of the session, all members in the House. All protocol is observed. I'm standing here in support of Option 1 which the African National Congress is behind. I also believe that the people will not represent themselves in the Parliament as it will cause more chaos, it will cause more disunity and everything will go into disarray. So I submit that I support Option 1 of the Amendment Bill. Thank you very much.
Next.
Thank you Chair. My name is Raymond Lefupani from Greater Zanin Municipality, Watre. I'm also a councillor in the Greater Zanin Municipality. I therefore here standing on the position of the EFF. As the EFF, we see that it has been long overdue that this Act must be done with and we get something that is of democratic nature. So as the EFF, we submit that the way in which local councils have been presented and done, let it apply also on the Parliament and legislature. We therefore as an EFF don't believe in the suppression of democratic inclinations of our people. So we therefore support and submit that independents, candidates and individuals also be regarded and given opportunity according to the Constitution. We are also having a worry with the issue of payment to contest the election, that money is too much. So we therefore ask for this Parliament to look into it so that we do not discriminate other people to contest election on the basis of financial constraints. I so submit, thank you.
Thank you Chairperson. My name is Thisalan Mashava from Greater Guian Municipality, Watre. So as the EFF, we are of the view that the Amendment of Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view that the manner which councils are constituted must apply to both Parliament and legislatures in terms of independence representation. The issue of payments to contest election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on this basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not support in the suppression of the democratic inclinations of our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the Constitution and be presented to ratification to the relevant bodies. So I submit, go.
Tableo Shaye Palavora Watre, Wapalavora Municipality. As the EFF, we are of the view the Amendment of Act 78 of 1998 is long time overdue. We are of the view that the manner which councils are constituted must apply to both Parliament and legislature in terms of independence representation. The issue of payment to contest election is a lot and the committee must look... The committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. The EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclination of our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to the Constitution and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies. I so submit.
Next.
Thank you Mr. Chairperson and all the colleagues. My name is Shibodan Edward Moven from Watre Dean and I'm the Councillor of Greater Zanin Municipality under Makshopesabregin. Mine, I won't go deeper, is just only to support the Option number one as the member of the ANC. So I submit, thank you.
Next.
Okay. Thank you Mr. Chairperson, all protocol observed. My leader of the Parliament EFF. My name is Trifina from Wapalavora Subregion. I'm here to stand and thanks for the Chairperson to give me this opportunity to participate today. Mr. Chairperson, as the EFF, we are not... We are of the view, the manner... Where I am, sorry. As the EFF, we are of the view, they... They... They, the Amendment of Act 73 of 1998 is long time overdue. Sorry, I've got a problem of eyes. Yes, we are of the view that the manner in which councils are constituted must apply to both Parliament and legislature in terms of independence representation. Mr. Chairperson, the issue of payment to contest the election is a lot and the committee must look into it as well because no one must be discriminated on the basis of financial constraints. Mr. Chairperson, I also, the EFF do not believe in the suppression of the democratic inclination of our people. Therefore, we do support that independents and individuals be considered in a manner that complies to Constitution and be presented for ratification to the relevant bodies. I thank you Mr. Chairperson and sorry for the eyes.
Now, thanks very much for all the submissions that we made since 10 o'clock. We want to thank members of the provincial legislature who joined these public hearings. Also thanks members of the Home Affairs, Honorable Kuta, Honorable Mulequa. Our officials of Parliament, councillors and mayors who are here. Will then go and consultate this report that you have received from yourselves. At the time the committee is going to deliberate, it will deliberate and then hand over the report for debate in Parliament. As you know that we are conducting parliamentary hearings throughout the country. The other team is in KZN. And tomorrow here in Limpopo, we are going to end our hearing in Skukune, in Khurubala Stal. So I want to appreciate the efforts and your time for interacting with the Portfolio Committee. Thank you very much, at this stage, the hearing has ended.